Camera, you're not gonna have a monitor? Coming up in a few moments, live for the Philosopher Podcast, we have Don Don Ontiveros, that's coming up in a few moments. We're gonna try to post this on my Facebook page. Make sure you invite me. If you guys have some questions, make sure you guys post it on our live broadcast page in a few moments. Well, I guess, because I remember when I was a kid, kid meaning like eight years old. And we have like a No, no, it wasn't actually me, it was my folks. We had like an annual prayer thing called Birhin di la pas ba, it's like the patron saint for safe travel or something like that. Every year, we would have like a mass that will last for seven to 10 days and then every time there's a prayer, every time
Every night, yeah, every night.
Every night for seven to 10 days, every time there's a prayer thing or like a singing part of the novena. Yeah, I would like, like No, no, I would pray out loud or sing out loud. And then every time, every time after the mass, after the novena, Ingon do na ang mga folks, my relatives, kukuha din mo tingin dun, we should be an announcer. So it stuck, like every year, they would always say that and then maybe when I was a kid, it stuck, maybe I should be an announcer too, right? So eventually, you know, the passion stuck and ever since I was in grade school, Man hugas ko plato, like I would like ad lib, you know what I mean? I would listen to a song and I would like ad lib, so so that's how I knew at an early age what I wanted to do. So that's how it came to be. Akuna make interview niya, dun pa kitag ka so good? Okay. Okay, we're actually live on the Philosopher Podcast already done.
Actually, okay, okay na to?
Yeah, we're live already.
Na pill na to?
I don't have it here in my thing yet, huh? I just wanna make sure I can share it on my Facebook page. It's still not shared here. I'll just go to the Passion Cafe TV, okay? And then I will go to Passion Cafe TV done.
Say wifi ano d'yan?
There it is. Okay. Okay.
Asan d'yan? In the media corp? What na record yang tubag sa at an early age eh?
It was there, man, it was there. So anyway, let's begin already. Before anything else, before we start the interview, this show is brought to you by, at least lunch is brought to you by our good friends from Dessert Factory. Thank you so much, Kenneth, for sponsoring our lunch today. Of course, we'd also like to thank my good, our newfound friend Teddy C. Thank you so much, Kenneth and Teddy, thank you so much for lunch. They have branches that will be opening very soon, their Ayala Center Cebu branch, your favorite branch, Don?
Yes, third floor.
Third floor will be reopened soon, they actually renovated and they're gonna be reopened soon. They're also opening, they're also opening a new branch in Ayala IT Park. So they're gonna be there too as well. Hi guys, welcome to the Philosopher Podcast. My name is Jiga Junior, I'll be your host for today. And obviously, live here in the Philosopher Podcast, we have Mr. Don Don Ontiveros!
Mayong utso bay? Thank you for having me here.
Thank you for coming here, I know you're very busy.
Kumusam alimong meeting hapon, okay rara?
Okay, it was okay. I was supposed to schedule this interview yesterday, but Don Don was kind enough to forgive me for the emergency schedule, I had a little thing in my home, my mom's hometown. So we're here now, finally, Don. And when I knew, this is my first question. Okay, hold on, give me a second, this is distracting me. My first question all the time, Don, as always is, what is Don Don's family, educational, spiritual, or whatever background that has led you to this moment right here, right now, you being a they called you the miracle man back in the Cebu Gems days and of course the Cebuano Hotshot back in your professional days in the PBA. And of course, now the number one Cebu City Councilor. Give us the long story of Don Don Ontiveros.
In five minutes?
Or as long as you want, this is a long form interview, go ahead, sir.
I have an older sister, Auntie Eve, staff na ko sa office, hello, sa akong mga staff, gindirito guy, mano? And they're watching right now.
Good, that's good, that's good.
And my parents are both law enforcers, mas taas lang lang akong mama, so mas dako upinsyon akong mama. Grade school, USJR. In fact, sa USJR, dito ko naka-start og damgo, parehanin mo earlier nga, at an early age, kibao kaunsa, gidi mong mahimang profession, so I remember, I'll just talk about it later. So grade school, went to USJR, transferred to Don Bosco and I met your brother there, Steven. I think he's watching now.
He's watching us from Las Vegas, yeah.
From Lakers and Clippers, yeah. So, he's in Vegas, diba?
In Vegas, yeah, yeah.
Then, yeah, high school in Don Bosco. I had my breakout year, the third year, the first two years, tried out, wala akong matagad. Kay mubok pa mangko, imagine I was 411, grade six student. Then I remember, ako na lang ishare, our English subject teacher asked us, 1989, this was in 1989, asked us, where will you be by the year 2000? So imagine, 12-year-old, kitatan na tingali at an early age, o bata ata, diba? Ingon tag, ayog layat, mulayat, maduga, brag, imong faith sa pagka-bata ba? You know what I wrote, akong gibutangan dito, by then, I will be in the PBA.
Wow.
So ang nakibaw ra, ako, rog ang teacher, nga na may nakakita ang mga teammates, sugsog ko, diba? Ikaw, 411, ma-player ka, diga ikaw makaduwag college? So again, that was the first time, tingali at one point in our lives, brag na bully tabao inana. So it's, it's how you respond.
So your heart already knew that you were gonna be a basketball player, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Your gut feeling.
Gut feel, of course, I was a fan at an early age, eight years old. I remember, akong papa, gibutangan, kog makeshift ring, rakan ang isangit, ragan na isa
Bongbong?
Bongbong, nga magit sa itsar, rakan ingo lang, nindot lagi akong form, inana ba? I remember, my first number was number 23. Rookie year ni Jordan, pero not Michael Jordan, Ricky Brown.
Okay, okay.
So siya akong naganahan
Idol limo si Ricky Brown?
Ricky Brown, then every week, akong papapalitan kog sports magazine. Ganahan mo ko niya pabasahon, niya di mo kumubasa kayo, so sports magazines, swito kayo, stats and everything. So it went on to grade six, then mauna to akong dream, na-bully ko. Pero again, aako tong gigamit as motivation, so transfer ko sa Don Bosco. And I remember, gipangutahan ako sa pari, si Father Kato pato. Ansa man imong reason nga na mani kay Don Bosco, natubag na ko kay, ang pari dagdag kwarta. Mataho na'y kwarta, inana ba, brag na, na kuwan do sabi to, der, kanyang nahanan ko ba, kanyang, I want, mauna akong gusto din, ang of course, ang technical subject sa Don Bosco is advanced goodbye, which I was able to use to my advantage, pag-abot na ko sa college, kay nakuha na at an high school ba. So again, balita.
Doon sa man si Father Kato atong, when you said
Dili, brag nakasabot siya ba nga, brag, di doon too serious na ako ang tubag ba.
Why were you goofing around with your potential school?
Tingali ba, brag, icebreaker, inana ba? So again, so first year, first two years, wala, jugay ko na, hatagag break. Third year, ni taas na ko, so from 411, five to five-five, third year, nahimon akong five-eight. Then eventually, fourth year, mauna to, taas na kayo akong kompensas.
Nakay gitumar doon, nga nung ni taas na ka lang doon, kayo marawa?
Yes, gitumar doon sa akong pagumangkon. Growth balls.
Shinnyong growth balls?
Senyong, 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 ah, natulawan, inuna?
No, my, a friend of mine, Mark Kompleto, was also watching us in Phoenix right now, Arizona. Nagshinyong balls, so siya cause he was insecure that he was going to be a short person like I would be and what you gonna, what you gonna to, so what you gonna take? So you think
Yes.
That's what happened to you, seriously? Can you vouch for that? Well, genetically, nakaita gas na parents?
Nasaita gas, nasaita gas, akong papa five-eight, ako mama five-six.
Okay, normal height.
Taas taas, na kay uncle nga na PBA player, pero five-eleven at five-ten, inana ba?
So it's probably not 100% the shinnyong balls.
Oo, pwede sa't, pero, third year, I remember, summer, going to my third year. Grabe gitu, tumar, inom ko at bisag pait, kay ayaw, inana ba, aguanta, bala na, so ang result kay summer, parehaman make trabaho sa kong ate, ayder siya manghugas, ako malaba, puli-puli make trabaho sa kong ate ba? Iha, natanan kay, ikahuman og kaon, matug na malangko, matan ako para magduwa.
Okay.
Magduwa ako, the whole, from 3:00, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, duwa ko, ikaabot balay, kaon tug nako.
So three, third year, high school?
Going to third year.
So how tall were you already?
Pagsood na ko sa third year high school, naiingon ako, ni taas maka-doon, so I grew like three, four inches in that summer ba.
Okay, ni five na ka, ni five, kay 411, magalagad last time.
So 411, grade six, five to first year, five-five second year, five-nine na third year ba?
Okay, okay.
And eventually, five-eleven, six, pag-graduate na sa fourth year high school. So grabe ang growth sport din, mato, kung sponsorhan ko nila, hahaha, sa akong pagumangkon ba?
Okay.
Pero bitaway, that summer, brag dito, git ni saka akong kompensas, of course, kanyang manong kagduwa and I think it's obvious here, kanyang mag-aino ka kung duwa kag binisaya, git or kanyang mga ligaliga, manong, ma-improve maduga. And again, katong grade six, kanyang na-challenge ko, akong nagamit siya, inana ba?
You mean, you mean na-bully ka?
Yeah, na-bully, na-sugsog, brag, ginana, then
So that was a sort of like a turning point in your life, the time when you were bullied, you think so?
Tingali kay, brag, waman ka ni, mauha ka, mukhaan ka, pero brag, imong gi-challenge ba imong kagaling, brag, ito, inana?
You were not physically harmed at that time?
Wala, wala man, brag sugsog lang, sugsog lang.
But you took that personally, you took that as a child, as a grade six student?
I'll prove him wrong, brag, inana ba?
Okay, please continue, sorry for backtracking.
Yeah, okay na, then, mausan na yin nagamit na ko, later on, sa PBA career na ko. Then after, again, balik, pag-high school, transferred to San Jose.
Okay.
One year, nag-incharms ko dito, then I was, nindot akong performance in charms na natong pagkaon. Then I was invited to try out for UC.
Okay.
So that was the break that I needed, kay, I was the youngest.
Okay.
And I remember the first game, first game na ko, I was coming off the bench.
Okay.
Naiingon na ang manager nga rin ni June Mars, si Attorney Tenso, High Sir, if you're watching. Ingon siya sa coach, Dong, pasud lanas hon Tiveros. So to hear that from the manager, and I was far, from the far end, Tiveros, Tiveros, so dito.
Isud ka sa asama?
Padong na ko sa, musab na ko ba, for the first five?
It was the first game?
First game sa si Triple A. So, taghantaw, inana, wako kulba, eh, kay, ako, waman sila kailan ako, I have nothing to lose, inana ba?
This was an official game?
Official game, yeah, si Triple A, so agi ko, ang giingon ni Attorney Tenso, Dong, panlibre ka, tirad gida, kay kita man siya na ko during tryouts nga, ako, mo tiradgy ko and I stayed after practice or during tryouts. So, nindot yud akong duwa, that game, di ko makalimot, I think, I scored 28 points, inana lang, imo nag-order.
This is from our good friends from Dessert Factory.
Hello.
And then, but I answer
So, from there on, kanyang, it's really nice to hear from those mga gi-respect na mo ba nga, to hear those comments ba nga, Dong, in kompensang ilang yatag ba? And since then, akong kompensas, stayed, stayed there, stayed on top and then, and used that. So that, that year, nailhan na yud ko sa Cebu Basketball ba. So that was, I think, 95 or 96, yeah, 96. Then, 98, dito na ang NBA.
Cebu Gems, right?
Cebu Gems, but I heard of it when I was in Manila. I di pa-tryout man ko sa national team, 21-under, I was, I was still 19 years old.
Okay.
So I tried out, then, naiingon sila, Dong, for you to have a chance to make it to the national team for sea games, you have to stay here.
Okay.
And nag-skuwila magog engineering sa UC. And brag, di na ko mabiyan, pero naiingon sila, but, you know, there's this new league that they're coming up. Brag, NBA style ni format, so I had an idea, ah, abasig mag-form ang Cebu teams. I went home, I went back to Cebu, played my third year sa UC under Coach Jun Tan, who eventually was our first head coach of the Cebu Gens, so kabur kay nako, kay kailan na siya na ko. So I think, brag, I made good decisions ba nga during that time, na ni-favor sa Akuha. And eventually, na-hatagan yud ko kong break, but the first game, the very first game of the NBA, I broke, I fractured my right hand.
First game?
First game, the very first game, in fact, the first 30 seconds, the very first play.
Wow.
So everybody, it's the first game of the new league and everybody was trying to score, kay nindot ma kay kung ikaw may makaunag shot.
Yeah, that was historic.
Record naman na, diba? So somebody from my team took the shot and I was trying to get for the offensive rebound. Pag-rebound ni Peter Martin, padong siya diri, akong ganahan is still hana, then ko, laun, I think I lost, ah, so naiingon ko nga, ah, na-injured ko sa una, naka-recover ko, ah, maka-recover na sa kanin. So that was my mentality.
Your mindset, okay.
So I, I rehab for a month and a half, then I played my first game, nindot akong duwa, June. Then eventually, I, brag na, kuwan ko to, na-hatagan yud ko kong break, that I ended up winning the discovery of the year or at what they say, parang rookie of the year ba? So mauna, na-tan ko break, then nailhan ko sa mga PBA teams.
Okay.
So on my second year, going to my second year, daghan na kay offers.
Okay.
But I g-gimit ko sa taga Cebu ano Lulier, Don, this is will of, we will offer you this, nindot kay ningo, nga package. And ato nga package at that time, by sa Cebu, dakko, yugayo. Imagine na kay sakinan sa Cebu, diba, bugiro kay kaan, na kay sakinan sa Cebu, inana ba, ni dako ako mo. So I signed a three-year contract
With the Cebu Gems?
That was supposed to expire 2001, 99, 2000 and 2001. Then 99, nindot kay akong season, we made it to the finals, napil dimi sa Manila. And, tinundon ko, 1989, I, I wrote something, I will be in the PBA, I would be in the PBA in the kuwan. Then, explain ko sa team owner na mo, John Henry Lulier, our coach, Tunichi Ituri, among manager, Danny Francisco, and ko, boss, if you allow me nga, maka-add to na sa PBA, I think it's the best time, inana ba?
This was after the contract na?
During During the contract, within the contract, and daghan kay ko nabasahan nga, ah, dakko na yang oo, inana ba? And I remember this, nine newspaper, ni suwat ato nga, ah, if mo add to si Don Don sa Manila, he'll just be a small fish in the ocean.
Big pond, yeah.
Yeah, 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 if he stays in Cebu, he'll be
A big fish?
A big fish, in a pond.
Okay, in a small pond.
In a small pond.
Yeah.
So again, I used that as a challenge ba, inana ba?
Kapag doon nila nga, small fish na ka?
Small fish, ako, in Manila, kay daghan maduka may, no question, daghan yud kay talent sa Manila, advance ilang training, inana, and there were terms nga pag-abot ni Coach Jun Tan and Tunichi Ituri nga, first time na mo nadungan mga basketball terms ba? Kay sa Manila, high school pa or college, na tudluan ang mga bata, so in transition nila to the professional level, mas dali na sila matagag time kay mas makasabot man sila sa mga coaches. So pag basan ako add to, again, I used that as motivation nga, bitaway, ako nai-challenge akong kagalingon. So ako, jung ipasabot sila, John Henry Lulier, our team owner, and nakasabot sila. And they released me from my contract, provided nga sila may mupili sa team. So I went to Tandway, changed my contract, kay, ang sa Tandway ito, ganahan man nila nga, iipadayon rato ang contract na ko with Cebu Gems, but it's a different league. And it wouldn't favor me kay lahi man ang gasto sa Manila og sa Cebu.
Correct, yeah.
And ni sugot ang Tandway, sa tabang ni Al Francis Chua, the sports director, caron of San Miguel, he was our first coach. And, and nindot kay akong agreement ato with Tandway. Ah, pwede raman ni ma-share, naiingon sila, naiingon sila, we can give you a loan. Oh, we can give you a loan that payable when able, meaning for the duration of your contract, i-minus lang, inana ba? So mau gitu akong, akong goal, yes, this would be my very first thing that I'll do, is palitan ako, balay akong family. And mau git na akong goal, mapiba na ko, mauna is, I signed a five-year contract, so from three years, gi-usap, nahimong five years. So I was, I would say, ma-safe na ko for the next five years.
Okay.
So mau to, then, after ano, na-trade na, and I think, I made some bad decisions, na nasakitan ako ang ang Cebu community at that time, kay nibiya ako sa Cebu Gens. But for personal reasons, nasabtan nasad nila, and I remember, na-bash, na-bash akong family, ako, o di man masakitan, di man ko masakitan, brag, ang family raman gi-maigo ba, inana ba? And I think I was able to prove that right there nga, kanyang, ako gi-accept yan challenge nga, na ni-compete ko with, with
With the big guys?
With the big guys, and
With the big fish?
Yeah, with the big, and to show also nga, talents from Cebu can compete. nga ako lang ang ni-set, og kanyang, brag, inana, of course, na ay mga ahead na mo, of course, sila.
Si Jolas, right?
Jolas, but Jolas is from Cagayan. Jolas is from, di ri ni si Kat, si Jolas sa Cebu. Then na-add to siya Manila, na nakuan lang siya kay ako mag-ingon si Jolas, jo, when you came back to Cebu, napangutana siya naiingon siya, I'm from Cagayan, so ang mga tao sa Cebu, brag, ah, dilim man mo angkun si Jolas nga from Cebu, siya, inana ba? So brag, duwa, brag na-bash si Jolas, pero ako siyang i-explainan, kibao ka mga sa talas Cebu, lipay, magyugkay na sila, na nayproduktu ba? Ni-perform, og nindot, inana dito ba, so nasabtan nasad ni Jolas. And, and na ay nauna na ko, sila, Don Don ang palayo, daghan pa, daghan pa ba? And those guys nga that I look up to, makainon ko ba kung nabuhatunila, mabuhat sa' na ko? And also, my experience also, would inspire others nga, or will encourage others nga, to dream big. Kaya man ninyo maabot, it's just how you approach those kanyang mga challenges ba? And, and to be able to do that, brag, malipay na ko, like, karoon, daghan yud mga maayong Cebuano nga, na-arrogad sa Manila. In fact, nag-start na, even high school.
How many, how many years did you play for the PBA?
PBA, 17 years.
17 years, and what was the highlight of your 17 years in the PBA? What's the best year for you personally?
Well, di ko makainon, but anytime you win a championship is always
So how many rings do you have, Don?
Duha ra ko ka cha, ah, no, tulor ra ko sa PBA, once, ABL, I had many chances
Okay.
Sa kuwan, pero again, also, playing for the national team is, is, is an achievement for me.
Okay, okay.
Imagine, 12 or 15 players, out of the many talented or skilled or better athletic
When you say national, national team, you represented the Philippines in a global stage, right?
Asia, Asia, ah, kaabot or may kuwan, like mga invitations, ah?
Okay, I know you're not done yet with the story, because you're now a Cebu City Councilor, how on earth did that happen? Tell us.
Ah, well, ah, padong na mahuman akong contract with ABL.
Okay.
And, ah, well, before ABL, naiingon ako nga, this will be my last year sa PBA, so mauna a year before si Raymond Garcia, ni dool na ko on my fourth year birthday. Then after, ah, brag, ni-retire yud ko sa PBA, nanawag ni si Ernest Terrera. So sama nilang intention, anin nilang duha ba?
Idan is lang
Oo, maaligi niya, naiingon na mag-coffee-coffee, rako, di mo ni-coffee, lahay man eh.
It's a trap.
Maayon, but, but I listened to der kan by explanation, and they were very nice, inana ba? Then, I still had that contract with ABL. Then, after, I was invited to attend the birthday of former mayor Tommy Osmania.
Okay.
So I went there, went, daghan da ko kayo ang ballroom sa waterfront ba?
Okay.
I went straight to his table, and ka, sir, thank you, if, if, ma-madayon, could yud ka aning, ah, being a councilor, then maybe I I can help a lot or in any way, sa community sports, inana ba? Then, and I think that decision paved the way for me nga, dito nila, sir, my krama ba?
Don, knowing what you know about politics, you know, medyo a little bit of, medyo huga ogamay, you know, like politicians are, you know, always connected with corruption, daghan kayo mga ngilaan, madungganin mo about politics ba? The first thought that I had when I found out, you were running for
What was he thinking?
Cebu City Councilor was, what on earth is he thinking, man? He's Don Don Ontiveros, he's had a great life playing basketball, not connected with politics and all that stuff, guano na yud ka don? What the hell was he thinking, man? So Don, when you finally went to Comelec to sign up, that you were running for Cebu City Councilor, what the hell were you thinking?
Bitaway, what was I thinking? Bitaway, it's, if I can make a difference sa youth, sa sports, then I would, I would have I would say, makainon ko, nabuhat na ko akong trabaho ba? Pero with regards to other things, then you have to really be, keep your principles, maintain of course, ganahan maduka ba, nga, madeliver ni mo, kunsa yud mga, mga needs sa uban, and there, like, especially karoon, ako scholarship committee and there are rules to follow, pero ang, ang, ang aplikanta mo, wala mo follow sa rules, so it's, it's you bend the rules because of kuwan, or you stay with the rules, nga, dilim mapiktahan ilang, ilang feelings, or inana ba? And to experience it firsthand is, I would say, brag, enriching or kanageng growth para na ko ba? And then, that was, I look forward to, growth, growth of being a person.
So you wanted to serve the people?
Yes, you wanted to grow.
Give back as well and grow. You've been in basketball practically your entire life, right, Don? Probably half of your life or longer, right? What makes you think you're qualified to be a counselor, to be in Cebu City politics? Because it's a totally different ballgame, a pond intended. What made you think, ay, arin na ko, I can do this, what made you think?
I guess?
I'm sure a lot of people have been asking you that question, what, what makes Don Don Ontiveros think that he's qualified to be a legislator, right, legislator?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what a Cebu City Councilor is?
I think being part of a team for the longest time would, I would say, ma, di ko maingon nga, I'm best, but would help you in a lot of ways.
Okay.
Being part of a team, you know, your role, kunsa imong matabang sa team, kay, kung imong ako untanan magawasad nga, ikaw may cost
So teamwork, the concept of teamwork?
Yes, and, and I don't know if I answer your question, if I base this explanation na? In a team, bay, you have different roles, bay, inana, na-star, inana, and I remember, this was the sacrifice made by Edu Rama. Edu Rama has a chance to be number one.
Okay.
But he was thinking of the group, by thinking of the group, daghan siya nga, daghan mga kunsel sa saot masood, ako may naka-benefit ba?
Okay.
So I experienced it from Edu nga, by being the kind of leader that he showed, and I experienced it na ko when I was playing na, you have to think of your teammates, you have to think of what's good for the team, what's good for the group.
Sorry, what kind of sacrifice did Edu Rama make so that you will be number one and he wasn't? Explain to us the sacrifice, the ultimate sacrifice that he made?
Well, there are barangays nga, wapaka kita na ko, wapaka ilan na ko.
Really?
Yes, well, na may mga mountain barangays, bay?
Don Don Ontiveros is not known somewhere, where is that?
Mountain barangay, when you go to mountain barangay, kamo may mailan, like si Francis Esparis, Ginawa Delphine. Ikaingon nila Ginawa Delphine, mailan nila si Esparis, inana? Oh, makitaan man ba kay, sa mountain barangays, naramo ko's four, three, inana ba? And Edu Rama, Tony Quenko
Si number one or two?
Sila man, oh, number one
So what was the sacrifice that he made, that you mentioned?
He was gathering barangays in their compound, nga, mag-invite, mag-ipila-ila, so, mauna among schedule ba ya? I don't know if ma-answer na ko imong question sa next nga kuwan. So, among schedule, 5:00 AM, matan na ka, kay na kay 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM nga, handshaking.
Okay.
Every time I wake up 5:30, maingon yud ko, nga no, ni suod, mangkuwanin politics, nga no, ni suod, mangkuwanin, kapuya, rey, rey. Pero ikaabot ni mo sa 9:00 AM, bay? Makainon ka sa lam at kinimata ko, kay nakikita ko sa ilang sitwasyon, makainon ko, nakabisita ko nila, maingon sila ba nga? Dong, gehuwat ka sa kong banadri, magpa-picture tatunin mo, ina, maingon lang ko, mabalik may ikagabi, imam, kanyang may pulong-pulong. So from 6:00 to 9:00 AM, handshaking may, pahuway na ko, matug lang ko, gan, hour or two. Si Edu na siya igihimo at a certain time in the afternoon, nga, instead of going there, iyan lang ipang-invite ang mga barangays. And he was really focused on the leaders nga, kita magtinabangay, tayo, inana? So maabot na dito sa Rama compound, mostory ako dito for five, 10 minutes, mubalhin ko, naredes tungod, so makainon sila nga, ah, ikaw d'yan, Don Don, Dong, inana ba? So dito, ako mukog, yud ko, maangutan ako ni Edu nga, do, kanyang, asa mo ko, next mo add to, don, add to dito sa Inayawan, don, add to dito sa Godalupi, add to dito. Maingon siya ba nga, asa ko nga?
So that was the sacrifice that he made for you?
He was really concentrating on the group. "You're going to focus."
So, you can connect that also to being in a basketball team. Sometimes you have to play, you have to sacrifice yourself, right? Okay.
And qualified. I think there are more qualified. In fact, like Kenny Francis Isparis, he's been serving barangay for the longest time.
Okay.
Sir Eric Espina, who was appointed councillor. I think there were more qualified than me.
Okay.
I would say there were more qualified than me. And even in the north, there were more qualified than me. And I was there. I believe, first of all, the direction of Mayor La Bella and Mike Rama. And then, I had people behind me. They were Mamjez Pescara, who were helping me. First of all, the process. Then, me, to answer your question, if I'm really qualified or first of all, I think it's the passion to serve. It's the passion to make a difference. But being a attorney or a member of the public, I have so much to learn.
Okay.
And I didn't see it. First of all, I saw Raymond Garcia. I was going to say, "I'm going to go to Steven." I was going to say, "I'm going to go to Sibu." They were breaking. I said, "Bye." I was injured. I'm going to invite Raymond because he's doing a lot also for our party. And I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes, of course, yes. Back in nineteen eighty-nine, when you were still in grade six, you wrote that you were going to be playing in the NBA, right? I'm sorry, the PBA.
PBA.
Wrong league, wrong league. Maybe in the NBA soon. Did you, in your wildest dreams, also dream up of being a number one Sibu City councillor?
Never, never. But I was injured first of all. First of all, my job was there. You were injured only? And I'm fortunate. My mom or my dad, they showed me how to help in communities. And my mom is a community scout. I visited the city. And we've been doing that since I was a player. I visited the city. I was feeling that I was going to be a member.
Okay, so, you're going to be a member. Don, tell us about what Don Don Ontiveros can do for Sibu City. Tell us about your projects. Tell us about, I know you have a scholarship program, which you're going to invite a few people as well. So, go ahead. Tell everybody, Don, first of all, I'm going to die by basketball star, Don Don Ontiveros, in serving the Sibuano community. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I'm going to make an application.
Well, it's not an application. It's a philosopher interview. I'm going to say, "Pardon me, okay?"
Okay, right. I mean, at first, really, I was really more focused on youth and sports because it's hard to say. Experience.
Okay.
And, uh, right now, we're doing, we're doing some things. Tomorrow, we're doing strategic planning for our grassroots.
Okay.
That's what it's going to affect. And, for example, sports, that's what it's going to be. Like, I, during my campaign, I remember, uh, how do I say that? Sports educate.
Okay.
Sports unite. And sports build community. And by having sports program, not only for there is a city, also for mountain barangays, will involve leaders to step up, to have, to have direction, to make sacrifices for the people.
Okay.
And I'm a product of Interbarangay. I'm going to say, "I'm going to go back to Interbarangay." Hopefully, this year, if we get something. But for sure, next year, I'm going to revive that. I'm a product of it. Not only basketball, I'm going to go back to Interbarangay. But there are other events.
Other sports?
Other sports. That will be a member. When I, when I, we were doing Pulung Pulung, there were many children, they were going to the computer.
Okay.
They were like, "What do they want?" They look forward to on a weekend, sports activities.
To revive, you know, Don?
Yes, we will, we will do that. We will try to do it this year. We're doing, we're meeting some people.
In other words, you're going to change and help Sibu through basketball?
It's not just basketball, it's sports.
Through sports?
But Mayor La Bella has, uh, she's going to be fourteen and under this year for basketball. Preparation for the next year.
How important is a sports program for a city, for Sibu City? First of all, it's important for the city if you have a good sports program, Don?
Well, the schools, they have, they offer scholarships.
Okay.
They offer scholarships for those students who excel in sports.
Okay.
And some of the schools would travel south. Like, I, at my camps, I travel to Cagayan, Bukidnun. And I was going to say, "There are many talented, potential." They were like, "I'm going to go to Sibu." "I'm going to go to UC or I'm going to go to Don Bosco." I invited them. So, I, when I was asked to run, I was going to say, "I'm going to coach." I was going to go to my camp. They were like, "You're going to do it." They were not going to say, "I'm going to bring players from the city." They were going to be a member of the school. They were going to have activities. They were going to improve.
You think of a pool of talent?
Oh, exactly. So, it's for them. If they improve, then they try out for certain schools. Try out for UC. They were like, "Please, I'm going to offer you scholarships." And sports is one way to get a scholarship program.
Okay.
And, again, first of all, valuable is, like, Arnis. In UC, there are many people.
Okay.
They were like, "I'm going to try out from Cagayan." But if we get it from our students, first of all, in Sibu City, they were like, "They're going to be a member." It's just providing opportunities for them to grow and hopefully building it.
I know that, I think it was, "Oh, we already have dessert from dessert factory." "I'm going to buy dessert." Anyway, thank you, thank you so much. Anyway, Don, tell us how you felt on the first day at the city council. Tell us about how you felt and what was going through your mind when you presided? Because I know that, I think, Mike Rama was doing something, an official trip or something like that. And so, you presided in behalf of the vice mayor as a sort of like the, what do you call that?
Uh, session, I was a presiding officer.
The presiding officer of the council session. So, tell us about your feeling at that time.
But, uh, Friday night, we had, my staff received a note or memo
Okay.
that I will be acting vice mayor. Mayor La Bella will be out of the country up to Wednesday.
Okay.
I was like, "Huh." First of all, I'm going to die. Budget, budget hearing. They were like, "And this was on a Tuesday." Monday, too. I was like, "Nothing." I was like, "I'm going to die."
Okay.
So, uh, Tuesday morning, I remember, Monday night, I asked Raymond, "Who will preside the budget hearing?"
Okay.
They were like, "I'm going to die." Then, for the next one, imagine eight to twelve, then you have one hour to prepare or one or two hours to prepare for the two PM. "You're going to preside?"
Okay.
I was like, "First of all, I'm going to die." This, so, caucus, the party, they were like, "Caucus." So, we were like, "I'm going to die." So, Don, if there are objections, then that's the time you divide the house. They were voting. But if there are discussions, you're going to discuss. Then, if approved, then motion card. Then, "I'm going to die." I imagine you have less than an hour to prepare everything. They were like, "I'm going to die." But I'm grateful because even the councillors from the other party, from the opposition, they were very helpful. And they were really encouraging me. In fact, I was going to say, "Dong, I'm going to die." "I'm going to die." "I'm going to die." "I'm going to die." So, I heard that again, from the coach, from the opposing. I didn't say, "From the opposing." From the caucus, they were like, "I'm going to die." It was hard. So, it helped me.
Okay, okay.
And
What is going through your mind on your first day at the city council?
After or during?
Your first day, you know?
The very first day, well.
Feeling, you know?
I was going to say, "First of all, I'm going to die." "I'm going to die."
What was the first thing that you did?
I remember, so, I was going to check my Instagram. I messaged, I was going to say, "Councilor." Then, I was sending pictures of several places. I remember, did you
Day one, huh, day one?
This was before day one. So, I was like, "Mom, I'm not going to be a member." I was on my first day, July one. "Mom, I'm going to die." So, I was injured, July one. I was going to say, "I'm going to be a member." In engineering department. So, again, using your position to relay that problem and for it to be easier. I was going to say, "So, I'm going to go back." I was injured, July one. I was going to say, "So, what will be your first solution?" So, do we have to? Do we have to, like, to prepare?
Immediately?
Immediately? Or we listen to concerns of the barangays, which is more important? They were like, "I'm going to die." Or, "I'm going to die." They were like, "I'm going to die." 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 They were like, "I'm going to die." So, I'm going to go.
Don, for example, you're like, "I'm going to die." It's a complicated endeavor and there's so many, so much compromise that you have to do. There are backchanneling and all that stuff.
That's a backlog.
That's what, that's what politics is. Do you think, because I understand where you're coming from, your heart is pure. You have the passion to do it, the same passion that you had for basketball. Now, you're applying it to politics. But, Don, I'm going to die. I'm going to die. "Instead of changing them, they will change you." "You will become them." Don, do you think you will have the the intestinal fortitude? Do you think your passion will not change you? But instead, make everything around you, everyone around you better?
When you say them, can you describe them?
Just, just politics in general. For example, you're like, "I'm going to die." "I'm going to die." "I'm going to die." You know that, right?
Taking advantage of your position, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, blah, blah, the works, you know, corruption, like, you know, like, you know what I'm talking about, Don? So, do you think you will have the passion enough to be able to turn things around? And instead of becoming them, they will become you and have the same passion for service?
Right, in fairness, I've known a lot who is, I, I, I I don't say, "I'm going to use the word politician." I would, I will always say, "Public servant."
Okay, okay.
And I'm fortunate, I've met people who really are public servants.
Okay, okay.
And because of politics, uh, they're like, "I'm going to die." They're going to work, they're going to favor or they're going to go. And I cannot blame people. They would think of them, they were like, "I'm going to die." But I've seen them, I've worked with them. I saw it, they really have the passion to make a difference for the community. What is, what is best for Sibu City. So, I'm very impressed with their position, with their intention.
Okay. But intention is not enough, right? You know that, your passion will not be enough.
You have to make things collide to favor. First of all, they were like, "I'm going to die." And, and, I'm going to say, "I'm going to die." There are compromises.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, I, I, if, if I'm changed, then maybe I wasn't doing my job in this term.
Okay, okay.
So, there's no reason to run. Or there's no reason to extend your term. If you cannot do what you're supposed to do or not change you. I think the main reason you're going to do it is you want to make a difference.
Of course.
You want to, first of all, stand. First of all, you're going to be a member. You're going to die. But if you weren't able to do it for the next less than three years, then I have no reason to really extend. Or first of all, I'm going to, yes, I will work on this, this schedule. As I'm going to go to the people. Then, I, I'm going to say, "You're going to go to serve." Then, you have to serve. If, if you're going to change you because you're looking for personal interest, then there's no reason for me to extend. But I don't know if I answered your question.
We have common friends from the political field, right? And in fact, that's one of the reasons why I was, you know, I have all these questions that I know about you and all that stuff. And inside questions and all that. Before you came into politics, Don, maybe even just turn them off for a while and just not think about anybody else, but just you, Don Don Ontiveros, the person. What is your political philosophy? Or maybe your life philosophy that you think will be effective in helping this city?
Life philosophy?
Or political philosophy? First of all, your philosophy in life can be effective in affecting change here in Sibu City?
Well, there are people that are going to be a member. And if they're going to be a member, then you can be that conduit.[1478.24]
Okay.
Or barag agianan ba?
Hmm.
And yes, na ay mga like, I don't know, like last week or this week lang, naitaga MVP Sports Foundation that wants to help the grassroots. Then perfect, kay ako may na-assigned sa sports.
Hmm.
Then again, balik sa imong question, like, I don't know if nalayo ako.
Yeah, okay ra, okay ra.
Ang imong, ang imong was.
What's your, what's your political philosophy or life philosophy, whatever? What's your philosophy, uh, that you think will be effective in, in affecting change in Cebu City?
I don't know if I can answer that question, huh? Kay ako, I'm, I'm, I'm fortunate nga nakailala kung tao that has, ka nang nanai-experience ba?
Okay.
And then, and, and to learn it from them, barag, ako gini akong mamatabang and, uh...
Are you, are you, are you going to bring something new to the table? Like, uh, you know, uh, politics is, uh, it's been around for forever, right? And, and here, here you come, number one, coming into the city council, number one.
Maulagi grabby ka expectations, huh?
So, I, I, I expect that, we expect you to bring something new on the table, not the same old business as usual, right? So, do you have any, any, uh, anything in mind that you're going to bring to the table that has never been seen before in Cebu City politics?
Well, that I should keep my cards.
Okay.
Delete sa nako na I share.
Okay, 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 that's good, that's good.
If, if I will be able to share that hindi nako ma-deliver, then balikun ko derye, inana ba? But yes, I, I, I have and, 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 and I'll, I'll, I'll keep it, kay. Sometimes you have to keep your cards.
Yes, of course, of course. But I'm glad that you have it, I'm glad that you have, you have that in you.
Hmm.
Don, let's, let's, uh, uh, move to another subject matter. Um, but it's still related to sports, of course, because, um, you're obviously, uh, the Cebuano hotshot and the miracle man. Don, um, with a recent dismal performance of the Philippine team in the FIBA World Cup, wherein we were demolished by, uh, you know, teams like, uh, Italy, right?
Italy, Serbia.
We were, uh, we were destroyed, we were murdered by fifty points or more. Um, do you think, don, it's time for us to reconsider our focus on basketball? And instead focus on other sports as well? Wherein we have the actual physical genetic, uh, chance, opportunity to win? Because basketball, whether we like it or not, whether we admit it or not, is a game of, of size, right? And genetically, kita mga Pinoy, as you can see, the, uh, distance between me and, and Don Don, medyo mubuk-mubuk kita compared to the other, uh, countries, right?
Magtindaw niya.
Magtindaw niya, then they will see the actual difference. So, nasortian lang ka, you found the sinong balls back in your grade school. So, don, don't you think it's time for us to reconsider? Kaya buto dugay namang kaitaning sige lang yung taghammer away sa basketball, di mangyod. Barag, barag, we've never, uh, won anything gold, I think, especially in, in the FIBA World Cup or in the Olympic stage. Barag lisod mangyod, bang ano maday ngang antulantas sa, let's say, sports like basketball or maybe boxing, I'm sorry, boxing, or, or other sports nga medyo naatay magasang, amka daog pa ta.
Well, uh, let's go further. Before the GILAS program, thank you. Before the GILAS program, we have the NCC, nasurianan to ganina.
Okay, okay.
And they were the very first amateur team nga ni-focus good on really competing international.
Hmm.
And naatay mga, ato nasurian, ang mga naatay mga naturalized player that time. Sila Jeff Moore, Dennis Steele and Chip Injela, who is now one of the staff sa USA team.
Okay.
Kay nga no, they were, uh, boss dandin kuhanko was focused on really bringing that talent international.
Hmm.
So, wa siya nagunahon na nga iyang mga, nga ma- name or dirisa professional dirisa atong Philippines ba? And we were able to compete.
Hmm.
That time, mid-eighties, ABC Jones Cup, then the ABC, the, which what's now called the World Championship.
Uh-huh.
And you cannot blame players nga ma-establish sila or ma-stable nga mo anto PBA. So, na anto nag-PBA, inana, then there was a time, ang schedule mga sa PBA won't allow certain players or mga selected players to, to practice for a long time.
Okay.
And na-appel ko, ano, inana ba? And if makaingon sa ta, Lithuania, kinsa patong mga teams nga ni-compete sa nineteen ninety-two Dream Team, USA Team, they were massacred also.
Hmm.
Mga forty points, mga kuwan, uban gani, magpa-picture pa sila nila, Michael Jordan before, pero after pilaka years.
The Dream Team, right?
Oo, Dream Team, pero after pilaka years, na-appel din nilang US.
Hmm.
And they were able to be at par.
Hmm.
Kay kung sa size lang, naamantay size, sad nat. We have June Marfardo, we have, we have Greg Slaughter, we have Japet Aguilar, naamantay size. And we have talented guards that can create, that can compete with the best.
Okay.
It's just the mentality, it's just the priority of really focus sa karoon for this year for the international competition. Kung pwidi lang sa makuan ang PBA schedule, but again, you cannot blame private companies nga mo invest of basketball. Kay parehas atong agree, ganahan mangyod tag basketball, yung diris Filipinos.
This country loves the, uh, basketball.
There are, there are, naigo nun ako na, there are other companies or private, uh, uh, inana. I would say MVP and SMC, mauna magi mga taga, so kuwan.
Yeah.
Na-invested sa boxing, kay nag, nagkuan mangyod sila nga, uh, I remember si Mr. Vargas.
You, you mean, you mean basketball?
Nag-invested sila boxing.
Boxing, okay.
Oo. Ilajunggi promote gud ang boxing, kay kana mangyod makakumpet ba inana sa international competition. And the, the very reason why Pacquiao is the best pound-for-pound fighter.
Okay, okay. So, why don't we, why don't we?
So, your question is, nga nung delete na to ma-focus sa other sports, diba?
Because we're so basketball-centric, this country, right?
Ganahan yung basketball.
I'm sorry, okay ramangyapon nga, we will support basketball, why not, right? But don't we, don't we, shouldn't we, you know, like, maybe put more resources to other areas in which we can really compete?
I think we should, we should, like, e-balance, like.
E-balance na to ba?
Oh, e-balance yun na to, inana, and, and you cannot, again, blame, uh, us Filipinos.
Okay. So, it's, it's, it's not a size thing, right?
What do you mean, size?
I mean, I mean, it's not a size thing.
Ah, yeah, na, na, manta, pero delete lang kita, uh...
What, what do you think happened in, in the FIBA World Cup? Uh, because some people actually disagree with me and think that this is actually, uh, in a way, uh, successful endeavor, because we actually qualified for the FIBA World Cup. What do you think happened to the FIBA World Cup? And how can we, uh, do it better the next time round? Do you think if Don Don Tevers played in the FIBA World Cup, uh, do you think that the Philippines would have at least won a game against Angola?
So, ako ba ganahan, dito ko, maybe when I was younger, inana ba?
Okay.
I, I remember, kanina ba, ako nashera, two thousand seven, uh, among team trained in Serbia. Nakainon ko dito, had ten years earlier siguro, kung naabot ko derye, I would be a better player. Kay lahi gud ang training sa Europe.
Like what, for example, unsa may, kalahi answer?
For example, if, if gamay ka, you would be trained to still master the post moves. Kung dako ka, diba ingon man, kung dako ka, ayaw practice, og dribble, og shooting.
Oo.
Pero dito bisag dako ka, taas ka, praktison ka, og basic fundamentals, dribbling, maka-dribble ka full court and mag-practice ka shooting, maubitaw ka roon, advance na kayo kay European style of game. Us barag, barag, ato na-pattern ba, because NBA twenty-four-seven, diba? We pattern our moves to NBA caliber players. Pero Europe is just a beautiful game, again, in politics or in, in, in running a campaign. When you're thinking of the team, the team.
So, lahi gud ang the way they, they, they trained you in Serbia.
Uh, oh, yeah, yeah, we, we were in Serbia.
So, even if you're a small player or a tall player, you were taught the same basic fundamentals, right?
Yes, magamay ka, magdako.
Unlike in the NBA, nga ingon ka nga, basig ka, kung taas ka, di ka papaktsun og, let's say, free throw or dribble, right?
No, 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 free throw, like, for example, kung big ka, you have to dominate down low.
Okay, okay.
Size, good, size matters, inana ba?
Right now, of course, uh, we're in the, uh, small ball era, right? Where the, the, the mentality of the player, in the NBA at least, is shoot first, apologize later, right?
Yeah.
Uh, bef- bef- uh, do you think?
Yes, uh.
Do you think the United States, because of, uh, uh, the way they played, barag, there was a time after the Dream Team, or napildi sila sa.
Napildi sila, ah.
Do you think, uh, the, it, it's the NBA or the US basketball, uh, um, mentality, na-usab sila gamay because of the, because right now, we're actually play, playing, at least in the NBA, medyo European style of play, right? Do you think na-usab sila, bay, you think so?
Na-usab gud sa labay, kay, dito mangyod sa mga high school developmental games dito.
In Serbia?
No, no, ako it's in the United States.
Okay.
Dito maka-dang, kay ka-highlight na ka, barag makaingon na ka, this will be rank, blah, 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 because of your athleticism.
Okay.
Dito sa Europe, ang imong utok may gitodluan dito ba?
Basketball IQ.
Yeah, make the right decisions, make the right trades, advanced thinking, inana ba? So, so player, kamaon na sila, mo-handle certain pressures, like, ka na, dito sa States, magod purely athleticism at an early age.
You're a physique.
Physique.
Okay.
Like, like a Zion or kinsa ni sa high school, oh, LeBron James. But LeBron, LeBron James, uh, may nigg basketball IQ, basig masako si Stephen.
We're gonna talk about that, we're gonna talk about that, man.
So, na ay, na ay, na difference good by sa approach by, and, and, and I remember Coach Tab, mauginay gi-emphasize amo, Coach Ryko Turman, the, the first GILAS coach, mauginay gi-emphasize amo, European thinking ba, nga really, mas, mas paspas ang movement, dali rakan bulas, ay muha. In fact, mauman sa na mentality ni Coach Yeng Gao when he was coaching sa PBA. Naasilay gi-ingon twenty-two rule, either in two seconds, you have to make a decision. You shoot, you pass, you drive pack, la ina sa damu diskarte, pa, inana ba?
So, the Philippines has been adapting for a long time, which, uh, uh, sort of basketball brand? Uh, American or European, for a long time?
For a long time, American.
American. When did you think the shift happened? From, uh, or did we ever actually shift from American style of basketball to European style of basketball?
There, there were some teams doing that, but when, when you get to the playoffs.
Okay.
Pa, pataasan naman ag percentage, bay, when you have a June Marfardo, you take advantage of it. When you have a Poli, you take avan- advantage of the ball screen, nga may penetration. When you have this guy, so it's really taking advantage of the personnel that you have. And obviously, San Miguel has that, June Marfardo and the other guys surrounding him na sobra sagay ka-talented.
Okay.
Then of course, you, when you, you, when you are stacked, you are stacked. First, dali ragan mo, basta ask you the percentage mo daw.
Have, uh, have?
Mo-end up gehapon of being, uh, NBA style.
NBA style gapon, because of the playoffs?
Yes, kay mahog mag-one-on-one, more on task percentage, unlike in international.
Because the defense, because I think the defense tightens, right?
Yes.
During the playoffs in the NBA.
And, and there was a time by na i-gitawag illegal defense, purely good man-to-man on defense, inana.
Yeah, yeah.
So, gi-change na, I remember two thousand four, two thousand five, zone defense na pwidi na allowed ang zone defense.
Okay.
Before, sa professional, bawal man ang zone defense, ipakita mangyod ang talents, o saka player nga one-on-one, gud na siya, na kun double team, na ray ma libre. So, gi-change nila na, sila nol, iyalaga change, and naghimon nila, allowed ang zone para mapractice na for international competition. There were teams who took advantage of it para mapractice sa international, international competition. Ako, I was able to take advantage of it, kay delete namang kay kumakagukod nila.
Okay.
So, spot-up shooter, inana ko, inana, and, and, and mauna nga karoon, ang, ang teams, kung sa kaganahan, ma-champion, unsa mo rely gud sila sa individual talent. Dito sa Europe, it's, tanan gud, equal ba, makita ka, dali rakan pasa, dali rakan screen, bisag kinsa, maka-score dayon, inana ba?
Uh, based on the US way of playing basketball and the, uh, European sensibility of basketball, which do you think is, is appropriate and, uh, is better for the Philippine, uh, basketball culture that will allow us to dominate or at least to, uh, perform better than what we did, uh, this time around?
European mentality, European mentality.
Are you hopeful, don, nga, uh, Philippine team, despite of this, uh, uh, performance in the FIBA World Cup? Do you think, uh, are you still hopeful? Kenang tinanado na, ya, delete ka na pinadilusional, bang ang, ang, gada, galinga, barag, uh, because you're biased sa basketball, but do you think, uh, the Philippine basketball still has hope in, uh, maybe of bringing home the gold in FIBA or maybe in the Olympics? Uh, anytime soon within your lifetime?
Uh, gold, lisod, lisod gud, abay, lisod, lisod yun ang gold, kay, grabe na siya kagi, inana. But, but to make it in, let's say, five, six years, we have Kai Soto.
Okay.
Ka edad sa kong anak, seven-two, training in the US.
Hmm.
We have Edu, uh, delete Edu, AJ Edu, six-eleven, eighteen years old. We have, uh, talented, uh, collegiate stars.
Okay.
Hopefully, if ma-adapt nila nga, uh, yes, ka nang, di magkakablame sa mga bata, bay, nga ganahan sila maka, makatabang silang family. And the only way to do that is to be a PBA player, kay the Council, inana ba? But also, if they have, like, this sense ba nga maka-serv ko sa national team, maybe this generation, like what Argentina was, panahon nilang Ginobili. Like karoon, that was the perfect time, kay sila at the, at an early age, gi-train naman sila nga magka-uban, bay. And they were able to catch up, nga naigo sila nga timing, ang US wasn't.
Important gud mag sugod ug sayo?
Yes, oo, maugin na, bay.
Um, uh, based on your experience, don, doesn't the government allow? Is there like a mechanism in, in, in the sports program of the government? nga medyo tabangan ug sayo ang mga athletes, especially basketball players, nga mapalikat on sa Argentina?
Yes, yes, SBP is doing that, and that's why, uh, for a while, GILAS was doing that. Auto ang mga amateur players, then sil, amateur pa sila Japet, mga collegiate players, kay nga no, ang ilang obligation naman sa school.
Hmm.
So, they were.
Trained.
They were trained, they were, nakakumpito sila.
Hmm.
Pero again, makaingon sa dam PBA teams, ika-graduate, gaya ng mga bata, kuaon na nila dayon.
So, so doesn't, uh, the government allow, nga maybe like, there's an incentive scheme, nga, nga delete sila matin, lalong duwa sa professional basketball here in the Philippines? Or maybe makadua sila, pero delete as much commitment as they have now and then, uh, perform in, in the global stage instead? Don't, doesn't the government have like an incentive scheme?
So, mauna ang gibuhat roon sa GILAS, they're trying to, to fix that. And, and that's why, there's, yeah.
It's still ongoing.
Naatay, naamantay, i-gitawag ug batang GILAS.
Okay.
These, these are the kids, eighteen under.
Okay.
nga will be the, the next generation, mauna preparation, and mauna naade sila Kai Soto, naade ang mga future players na to, nga hopefully would stay there and represent in the, in the next qualifying ba?
Hmm.
Kay maumugini, maugin atong, I would say, ka nang big hope, kani sila Kai Soto.
Okay.
Maumugini mo dominate gud, pero again, when the time comes, nga there's an offer to play in the NBA or unsa, inana ba, hopefully naasani siya ma-allow sa ni, like, I remember when, when Yao Ming was, was, uh, drafted,
hmm.
na layo bi isad to iyang time sa Chinese national team, pero they were able to compete. Napildi lang gehapon sila even, even hosting, ba? So, kanina gud a chance, bay, in the future, ba?
Which do you think has a bi- uh, bigger chance, don? Uh, a Filipino playing in the NBA or the Philippines competing in the world stage in basketball? Asay mag-unan na, kapag tuonin mo, don?
Uh, basig magdungan.
Magdungan, okay.
Oh, see, I, I think Kai Soto is, is, is our chance, is our chance, huh?
How, how tall is Kai Soto?
Seven-two, seventeen years old.
Seven-two?
Seven-two, seventeen.
Wow.
Taas kay ang mama, bay.
Okay.
Ang papa six-seven, ang mama six footer.
Okay.
Oh.
Wow. So, um, where is he playing now?
Uh, nag-train siya sa States.
Okay.
Uh, ako, kung ako pa tanan, ganahan gud siya sa Europe, puntad dito kay style, pero na may European coaches mo trains sa Tenggali Niya, inana ba? So, seven-two.
Does he move like a seven-two player?
Mas paspas na siya last year, ako siyang nakita. And, and again, nagitya kuwan, pero I think it's the experience, it's the constant, uh, games that will help you improve, delete lang mga solo practice.
So, you think, you think Kai Soto has a chance to play in the NBA?
I would believe so.
Okay.
Uh, kay, oh, you, bay, delete man matodluan ang height, gud.
Of course, yeah.
Uh, and, uh, if, if he develops that touch, like, parehas sa mga, uh, delete ang kumu-ingon nga Sean Bradley ha, kay awkward man to si Sean Bradley, kanina siya na ni-improve naman sa Nisha.
Sean Bradley was a.
Was seven-six.
Was a tall, lanky player, right?
Lanky, lanky player.
Is he, is he also like that?
Okay, taas mga i-gud siya.
Lanky sa J.
Oo, lanky masagid siya, pero nag, nag-gay nagitya weights sa gud.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's just constant monitoring and kibao, ako naibawan, iyang papa naa-dito baga kuyo gud na Nia. And, and I think it's our best chance of making sa NBA. We had other chances, like sila Japet and even Bobby Ray Parks, pero the process that they go through, nga mag-school lang college dito, maagig developmental league, lisod yugayo.
Speaking of the NBA, uh, don, there's a question that you answered, uh, years ago, that sent, uh, sent shockwaves on the internet. Ningon, sil, ningon ko na ka, don, nga Kobe Bryant is better than LeBron James. And it sent shockwaves on the internet, in fact, uh, uh, the internet was a buzz when you, when you posted that. Don, explain to, to our, our listeners and our viewers, don, why do you think Kobe Bryant, who is already now retired with a Mamba mentality, is better than Taco Tuesday LeBron James?
Well, uh, gikan man na ni Stephen, diba? And I have friends sa, sa other side, sa, sa LeBron side, ako Kobe fan man dugo.
Okay.
Uh, si Kobe was, was, I think, the greatest for a period of time.
Okay.
And, and to Michael Jordan, to go there and kanagayng brag imong abton, gabay ramang kay mga players nga, they were, they were told or they were like Penny Hardaway, Grant Hill, gaya ingon the next Jordan, inana ba? And they weren't able to reach that.
Not a single one, none of those two names that you mentioned never won a single ring, right?
Even Timak.
Okay.
Ka nang maingon gaya, the next Jordan, but si Kobe was.
In fact, he almost got close, he won, had five rings, right?
Five, oh. Ka nang Si Amay ka nang ni-aspire, gud ba nga ka nang, kanagayng brag mo-abot, gud gani, ka nang siya gay, ka nang delete mahadlok ba nga, kung mo fail ka, you'll be the, katong other players. nga ni-suway, nga wa kaabot, kay wa nila na, na-handle ang pressure or ang, ka nang inana ba? So, nga, I would say si Kobe, makaingon gud ko nga daghan gud og, mas, mas talented, mas daghan gud kuwan. And also nga, ikaw may pinakadaghan og tira, nga na-miss.
Hmm.
I remember, ang, ang pinakadaghan og, ang player nga pinakadagag na miss shot was John Havlicek.
Okay.
So, meaning siya may pinakadagag na tira.
Okay.
So, si Kobe was, was willing to hear nga Kobe buhayya, inana, inana ba? Kay nga no, the intention to be at par with Jordan is gamay rakyang ka nang ni-survive ba? And wa kung maingon nga, na, naapsan niya si Jordan, because I would still consider Michael Jordan as the best, inana ba?
How is he better than LeBron James? Now physically, uh...
For a period, bay, for a period of time.
Kobe Bryant is only six-six, I think LeBron James is six-eight, six-nine, right? And, um, of course, mas-masculine si LeBron James, right? He's a specimen, a, a, a physical specimen that, uh, is, 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 um, has never been seen. Uh, si, si Kobe Bryant medyo, uh, Mamba manisya, kay lanky manisya, barag, very wiry, thin, right? But he was still strong, although he was thin. So, how is he better than, uh, uh, LeBron James during their primes, huh? Let's compare LeBron James in his prime and Kobe Bryant in his prime. Nganong, pata, pataan alin mo, masilin gud man si, si Kobe?
Makainon ko bay, actually, when I first got your post, ingo nga, ganasam ako naingon na na. This is Stephen, na dyan, mung iwan, kay Laker fan, magod si, si, si Stephen.
Okay, okay.
Even na na si LeBron. But, tabay, makaingon dugo, Le- LeBron has been dominating for the longest time.
Of course, yes, yes.
Kobe was there to really challenge ang stature ni Michael Jordan. If Michael Jordan was one A, he was willing to cross that or ka nang challenge that path, ba? And he was, naka-survive siya and, and, and stayed long, daya, inana, don. Ang iyang mentality was, was really makaingon ko, make him great, was his mentality, mabitaw Mamba mentality. Pero being, I would say, if, kanina na nang po tanan, if players want, kung kinsa ang ganahan nila nga makigduwa, I think they would go with LeBron, kay they were, LeBron would Magic Johnson manisya style.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Inana ba? And, and maunisya, ka nang gi-ingon ba nga, sometimes player want to play with LeBron, then Kobe.
Of course, yes.
Kay si Kobe, lahi man iyang approach, i-challenge magunin niya to get better. Tingali, parehas kang Michael Jordan nga approach, hape, diba, gi-sumbag ni Jordan, si Steve Kerr, si Kobe, iyang buhaton na sa 'yung mga teammates, pare kaabot sa duwa.
Hmm.
si Kobe, iyang buhaton na sa iyang mga teammates, pare kaabot sa duwa, ready na, inana, si LeBron more on, really, ka na, thinking sa uban ba, and, and makita na tanan how he uh, brag gi pangda iyang mga former teammates, into bringing to the Lakers system, inana.
Okay, okay.
So, ang imo was, your, ka na ang ingon nga, ako may naingon nga, Kobe is better than LeBron.
Because that's what you said, right?
This is Stephen na naingon na, pero for a period of time, I would say Kobe was.
But, but you, you, you idolize Kobe, right? And what, what, what is it about his game that you look up to?
Uh, well, graceful good siya tanawan, I mean, the same with Jordan, graceful kay siya tanawan ba? If mutan ako kay LeBron, di man, takor man siya athletic, inana, pero grabe iyang basketball IQ sa, not that dili sa basketball IQ ang kuwan nila Kobe, pero iyang graceful, then iyang fundamentals, his footwork, nindot yugay tanawan, and, 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 I was to, I was able to incorporate some of those moves when I was younger.
Which, which, which moves uh, did you sort of incorporate in your game that you uh, discover, or you, you saw in Kobe Bryant?
Well, ka na ang mga post moves and shot fake.
Okay.
Uh, naamatinge gahimo, highlight na ko nga move ni Kobe, ug move na ko nga nagkapareho ba, ilang gahimo, inana ba? And, bito, uh, naana si Kobe, bito na, nabuhat na ko, and, and during 2012, I was able to play Kobe.
Really?
Yes, wait, kita, deta, ako ginipinsan, zero out of one si Kobe.
Zero out of one?
Oh, na miss iyang single attempt against me.
Okay, where was this, where was this?
Uh, it was the birthday of uh, Manny V Pangilinan. And one way of celebrating his birthday was he invited those stars.
Okay.
Kay kuwan man to siya, uh, shortened si, ah, brag, ka na, collective bargaining agreement.
The shortened season to siya?
Before the shortened season, na delay to ilaha, so they were allowed to play.
Lockout siya?
Lockout season, exactly. So, he invited Kobe, Kevin Durant, James Harden, Chris Paul, uh, JaVale McGee. Kinsa patung naa dito, huh? Wa, lahi to si Kyle Lowry, waan man to sila nadua. So, kami, ako man, I was part of that Gilas program ba, kami ni Asi raman ang mga, kami ni Asi, ug ni Jimmy, ang professional nga naa sa Gilas program, and to, bata pa sila, Marshall LaCiter, Christian, Japet Aguilar. So, pag suod na ko, ako gi ingnan to si Marshall, let me guard Kobe, no, 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 I'm guarding Kobe, no, no, let me guard Kobe, nagunan na eh, ibay. Kinsay mali pinsan ni Kobe, pag picture, dyan nindot kita, na, naasa akong kuwan, naasa akong office, nga kabantay ko ni Kobe. Uh, I was wearing number seven.
Okay, okay.
And in fact, I got his jersey.
Okay.
After the game, yeah, that, that after the game, nahimo pag yung Kobe day na ko, kay, akong driver may nakakuha sa sapatos, so imagine, ang driver na ko na, Kobe was looking there sa katung, tunga, tunga sa tao, pero paglabay niya, inana, bay, so ni Anna Adri, ni Anna Adri, ang sapatos, nakuha niya. Ang mga players sa PBA, after every game, maguhat ang mga driver. Kay kahuman duwa, magilis pa man ang mga player, diba? Pag human akong ilis, bay, ako may gahuats akong driver, asa man ako sa kena, in ko, sorry, asa namang ka. Siya, grabe, madain nindot, madain ni feelings, artista, but, ano man, tagang kay nagpa-picture na ko, kinaang sapatos ni Kobe. Imagine, waiting for him for 20 minutes, na ako's gawas, more than 20 minutes, pagabot na ko, sa iya nagpa-picture, wala na ko ba? So, in, in less than a week, bay, he earned 60,000 for that sapatos.
Ah, she, she sold the shoes?
Oh.
Wow, okay.
May pa yatong gihuat, million na tatoo, oh, sa mata, mata, sorry, tinood, huh?
Wow, wow. And speaking of, of the NBA, Don, um, we are now in the age of super teams, right? Um, Kobe's former team, the Los Angeles Lakers, already have LeBron James, they got Anthony Davis of the, of the New Orleans Pelicans, uh, uh, New, uh, the Pelicans, right? And of course, uh, the Clippers ha- have, Kawai and Paul George, right? This is the age of, of the super teams. I'm sure, uh, this has, this was started a long time ago, I think LeBron started this, when he had the Miami Heat, right, with, with Wade and Chris Bosh. What is your uh, uh, take on this and who do you think will emerge victorious in the 2019, 2020 NBA?
Well, I mean, you cannot blame players banga to get help, kay, the, the chase for that ring would, again, marag maka ingonin mo banga, yes, mafulfill ko, kay na champion ko, pero also, you have to appreciate also like a guy like Damian Lillard. Of course, naginvite siyang mga players nga, mutabang niya, pero waan may maatong sport lang, inana ba? Pero, the players nga, uh, nag sabot nga magkakuwan sila, you cannot blame them, kay, grabe ang competition sa NBA, and then, and lisod good pag, ang mga manager lisod kay, napaghimo nga masud ang ilang, budget for that year, kay, na guna sila gi tawag luxury tax, for example, na sila budget for this every team, 120 million or pilar na, pilar gana ilang, I would say, ihog na to 60 million na, or 80, 80. Anytime nga mula pas ka na, maugun na imong buy runs and ng luxury tax, nga i-divide sa mga other teams nga waan ni, waan nila pas sa luxury tax. So, they were willing to pay to get that ring. So, ako, I have nothing against it, kay, ka na, it's, it's good for other managers? How do they do that? Magawas man ilang pagka creative, how would be able to get this guy in a year or two?
Being a general manager of, of a basketball team in the NBA is actually also a, a sport in itself, right?
Oh, oh, lisod bay, dili re, aberin nila, dali raka'y na, to, to, to get that player to sign, nga, or to agree palang in principle, lisod, na kaya na nabuhaton.
So, who do you think will emerge victorious in the NBA this season, this coming season?
If, kani malipain ni si Stephen, or I don't know, if, if LeBron stays healthy, they might have a chance to go deep.
Okay, in the playoffs?
In the playoffs, but that doesn't guarantee akoan, kay, uh, ang Warriors, I would say, second, third round, tingay na, inana, kay, magawas naman ang duwan ni Stephen Curry, pero he doesn't have a Klay Thompson till, what, March?
Six months, six months.
Oh, March or February from, from here, and uh, sa East, tingali, uh, trust the process, ang masaka dito, or even Milwaukee Bucks.
How about the Clippers, man? You forgot about the Clippers.
Yes, mabitaw last ko, okay. Uh, when I saw Kawhi sa San Antonio Spurs, naasa din sa si Tim Duncan, na fan ako ug Spurs. Uh, then, when he was traded, or when he asked, ambot unsang exact term, dito ko nagcheer ko sa Raptors.
Okay.
And pagka daug, pagabalhin yan, in ko nga, magcheer, nasad ko sa Clippers, ano nila kay. Pero, I don't know if, if ang would be enough, ang unsang iyang mga kauban, iyang mga supporting cast, pero I'm, I'm looking forward sa unsang may tabo.
So, who do you think will victory? What's your big bold prediction, man?
Big bold prediction?
NBA Finals.
I would say from the West.
From the West. Uh, who's it gonna be? Tell us, come on, man, the Clippers, the Clippers?
I'll, I'll keep the cards.
I go West, pero di come with, just pick between the Clippers and the Lakers, come on, guys, come on.
Mga Cebu City scholars naman, naodirigatan, ah, Cebu City scholars naman, uh, uh, try to reach out to us, uh, we have, we had meeting last week, and we were asking for your support also to act as big brother sa kaning mga present scholars na'to, and, dili madahas sa mga school coordinator naman, mga matreys mo, we, we like to know, unsan na inyong trabaho roon? Uh, were, were we able to help you, na naabot na inyong damgo, sa kurso nga inyong gikuha? We really want to hear from you, uh, visit us, or check on your uh, school administrator, help them out, kay, ganahan mi matreys mo, and hopefully help us with our projects. And, and to answer your question, uh, it has been approved, the supplemental budget to uh, to have the traffic system. And also, I remember that the first supplemental budget one was to focus on the garbage for the next three months. Kay, the, the budget allocated for this year was up to June. So, we have to look for supplemental budget, katung mga waan na gamit nga project, atong gikuha, nga gigamit na'to for, for this period of time before we get that uh, contractor good nga mo serve long term, sa, to think about garbage problem na'to. So, for the meantime, nati gikuha supplemental budget one, we call that, mauna focus for gar- garbage. It has been approved last Tuesday, ang supplemental budget two, nga mo focus on that, naatay project mga medium, medium rise building.
Okay.
nga puhon, ang mga nagpuyo sa kaning mga creek, bay, bawal, magyukay na sila, bay daghan, magyukay nagpuyo, dya, kay, duol kay kung magpagyo or unsa, dali na ilang mga kuwan ba, so mahumanin na'to, we have the budget, mahumanin na'to. Imagine, yes, nindot kay ilang mga kahimtang, maabot sila, ug ka na brag, uh, five story building, gamay raka'y 30 square meters or 27 square meters, pero nindot imong, imong feeling, nga nakay ulian, nga naisugga, naitubig, sa first floor na ay uh, training facility nga para ma-improve ka, and if I remember sa akong nasaptan, makontrata raka dya, magpuyo ka five, five years, minimal na imong buy run? For you to focus banga maka improve ka sa imong lifestyle ba, then in five years, kung natabangan na nimo, then mangita na ka, uglaan ka puyan nga, magstay na yugay dya, those are medium rise buildings nga among i-focus. I think Salorega, mantay una naman buhaton, with, with drainage bay, we had uh, we had an executive session sa DPWH, and they explained to us the problem, and ang implementation would take time, again, ang, ang, ang process by bureaucracy, inana ba, we have to go through, and ang sa tubig, last Tuesday, ang executive session with MCWD, kibaw ba kay ang salt water intrusion, ni sakka na dito dapita sa north, in yohang area.
Yeah, okay.
Ni sakka na, so, dako sa kay silang problema, nindot siya kay ang question nga, gi raise nila, uh, Sir Mike Kramer and Joel Garganera nga, nganong waan man na na'to nabuhat sa una pa, early pa nga, ang naitubig na dito sa uwan, wala na'to ma, uh.
Capture.
Capture, catchment, brag water catchment, unya, ikaabot dito sa dagat, kuaona sa tugbalik, so dako yugay yo, and, 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 na pay a series of meeting by nga, naanagun, nagexplain na, inana, so there, there were questions nga nganong waan nabuhat, early.
So, are you hopeful, Don, nga, now that uh, you're there, and then it's 2019, nga, nga, medyo ang mga kalisudz atong mga, kaiksuunan nga medyo ma, ma, ma alleviate nga may ilahang kasakit?
Kami, maka ingon ko nga, we were doing things, we were doing things, and again, na, na, na approved na ning supplemental budget, dako, dako, ni daghanig ma-focus.
Okay.
Garbage, uh, traffic system, uh, water, same CWD, and uh, last week sa, gi meeting sa dangkanan sa M, BRT, MRT, kay appeal man na sa traffic system, dako man sa dam budget na'to dya, oh, inana, and, but that would take time, the BRT, kay napamay uh, acquisition rights nga, ipagian nga process.
Okay.
And uh, bay, uh, train part na sad na, kibaw ko, ka na, daghan na kay reklamo, pero ako, in, in, in our part, uh, help us also, uh, nga matrabaho na naman ba? Like, ako ang player, ma bash man, inana, we're willing to, to hear those from you para makibaw good.
What do you think, what is your message to Cebuano out there who would like to help? Unsa may buhang message na doon, nga makatabang sila na'to?
Ako bay, ganahan kay ko, ka na gi ingon ni Sir Mike Kramer, ka na gi ingon, together we can make things happen, we'll do our part, you do our, you do your part, with regards to garbage, na nakuwan pa yugay, ibay kay, kami kuyog may niniya, nag, nag, nag clean up, drive me, dito miss ubos, nag limpyo me sa Guadalupe River, ubos. Inana ba, then kami may ni sakka, so ako may napicturan na'to, ni, ni highlight ko, na viral ko, inana ba, but, kay, lain kay paminaw, na viral ko kay, nagpa-picture ko, pero, akong, akong, that, that night, I was invited, in ko, namig buhat nga part, hopefully you'll do your part as well. Uh, kung kibaw mo bawal, palihog nansan ka bawal, kung kibaw mo nga, dili mo mo left turn, ayaw nansan mo left turn, inana ba? Those, those small things.
If they have a message for you, because I'm sure this interview will, will uh, allow for a lot of people who'll be uh, wanting to perhaps communicate with you or talk to you, or maybe get in touch with you, is there like a, a social media page that they can go to? Maybe like anywhere, if they wanna get in touch with Don Don Nteveros?
Well, sometimes I check my Instagram sa makabuhat sa ko dito mga request, in fact, daghan na sa ko request nga, natubag dito. And ako FB page, asa man to.
At Don Don Nteveros, unsan man na siya imong FB page?
Ayaw na, akoan, asa man to.
Once again, we'd like to thank our good friends from uh, the dessert factory, Kenneth and Teddy, thank you so much.
Uh, kani Donaldo, Don Don Nteveros.
Donaldo?
Donaldo, Don Don Nteveros.
That's where you can uh, be contacted if, if they have any concerns. Kung naghahasa ilaha, dya, kontakni mo don.
Na, na, nansan me naadtoan dito bay, pero again, I, I was asked, I was asked katung, karemember ko nga, unsan man imong buhaton, ordinance or resolution, ko, in ko nga, kami, kami ni Philip Safrat, tingol na, uh, we would check on the barangays ko, unsa gi need nila, inana, makibaw may body to, kay, lain kay, magimohimo minya, dito waan, namo, gipamin na unsa lang mga concerns.
Done, um, what's your final message? In the Cebuanos?
Morato, together we can make things happen, be it a small thing that you do would really help a lot. Imagine, if imo ng gibuhat, then makipansay mga nak, then it, it, it spreads positive, positive vibe.
Don, we have so many uh, questions from the internet, Don, maybe we'll have a part two of this interview, right?
Oh, okay man, oh, pero mag-break tatanong para mga on, pero sigal man naman, oh. Nanasagoy meeting roon.
Okay, that's why, thank you so much, Don, thank you so much, thank you so much, thank you so much, guys, you've been watching the Philosopa Podcast. Our guest, of course, is the number one Cebu City Councilor, Don Don Nteveros, thank you so much, guys, thank you, Don. All right, all right, all right, thank you.